All right, let's get started. I guess that's the call to order, August 20th, 2020 business meeting. And the link to the agenda is www.clackamas.us/meetings/bcc/business/2020-08-20. And with that, I'd ask the county administrator Gary Schmidt to please take the role.
Thank you Chair. First, our staff support today, Mary Rathke, clerk to the board, Andrew Naylor, county counsel, and other staff support Dylan Blaylock, Rich Marvin, Janice Nielsen, and Garrett T. With that role call, Chair Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Thank you, and we are holding this meeting virtually. If you're joining us on Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we'll prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have the option of providing your comments to us live. Alternatively, anyone can send in a comment to be read during public communication portion of our meeting over email. Just send it in at any time during the meeting by emailing clackco news@clackamas.us. That's clackco news@clackamas.us. Be sure to include your name and area, uh, and area when you send in that email. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Gary for a COVID-19 update.
Chair, would you like to do the pledge of allegiance?
Oh, where did I skip that? We need to put that in yellow. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, now, I'm going to turn it over to our county administrator Gary Schmidt for a COVID-19 update.
Thank you Chair. Uh, well, please bring in Nancy Bush and Dr. Sarah Present, who will give the first portion of our update. Nancy is the Director of Disaster Management and Incident Commander for the Emergency Operations Center, and Dr. Sarah Present is our Clackamas County Health Officer. We are still transferring them into the room, and Dr. Present's there, but I don't see Nancy.
Was she off today?
No.
No.
Nancy is having just a little bit of prob-- Nancy's having just a bit of problem connecting. Gary, I'm trying to get her connected right now, but it might be a minute.
Okay, can we bring Dr. Present in, please? While you're doing that, I'll go to my update. So Commissioners, I, in accordance with your COVID-19 emergency declaration, 2020-14, I signed a contract on your behalf, which I emailed you about yesterday, and for the record, we'll share it today, right now. It is for disaster management and for health, housing, and human services. It is approval of amendment number three to Do Good Multnomah to administer a motel voucher program. This contract amendment number three was simply extending the time. There was no other additions, but because the total dollar amount of this contract is at $450,000, that is above my signing authority, so I am asking you to ratify this contract amendment I signed on your behalf, um, actually, two days ago, on August 18th, 2020. So seeking your approval, I'm sorry, your ratification of that contract.
So I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Move the second that we ratify, uh, this item as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, oh wait, please, uh, poll us, Mary.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humberston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Gary, back to you.
So now I see both Dr. Present and Nancy are in the room, so I will ask whoever would like to go first, please go forward with, uh, Nancy, go first with your updates. Please go ahead, Nancy.
All right, thank you, and good morning, everyone. Sorry, I'm not sure why I couldn't get connected today. So our numbers for today in Oregon, um, we have 23,870 positives, which is up 419 since Monday, 408 deaths, which is up 20, 477 and 246 negatives. Clackamas County has 1,725 positives, um, that is up 26, uh, 55 deaths, which is up five, 46,349 negatives. Multnomah County has 5,448 positives, which is up 61 since Monday, 108 deaths, which is up six, 106,913 negatives. Washington County has 3,403 positives, which is up 45. There are 31 deaths, which is up four, uh, there are 69,197 negatives. Hospitalization statewide for COVID is 147, which is up seven since Monday. Thirty-five of those are in ICU beds, which is down two, and 15 on ventilators, which is up two. There are 138 ICU beds available statewide, which is down 20, and, uh, we have 740 that are staffed completely, and 787 ventilators are now available statewide. We have received 110 of the school plans out of 170, so we do continue to work on those and make sure, uh, we're going through those and reviewing those we need. And I'd like to go ahead and go to the metrics now, if, uh, you could bring those out for me, Dylan. Thank you. So the tri-county area for Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington, uh, we are missing two of the, or two of the six. The percent of cases not traced to a known source in the last seven days is now at 45% and should ideally be. And, uh, we are meeting, uh, 91% of the cases in the last seven days, um, that have been contacted within 24 hours, uh, which is 91%. It should be 95 or greater. Clackamas County is now missing four of the six, which this shows how data from week to week can change pretty dramatically. Um, here we have an uptrend in percent of cases that are positive in the last seven days, which is now 4%. Uh, the percent increase in new cases in the last seven days, that should not be more than 5%, which is now up to 9%. The percent of cases not traced to a known source is at 45%, and again, should be 30. And we do have an uptrend here in hospitalizations. If you could take me down to Multnomah County. So here in Multnomah County, um, they have, they're missing two of the six, uh, for the trace to a known source is at 52%, which should be at 30%, and they are meeting, uh, only 83% of the cases that are being contacted within 24 hours, which should be 95%. If we can go on down to Washington County, please? Thank you. The Washington County is also missing two of the three. They are at 32% of the cases not traced to a known source, so they're just barely above that 30% mark, and they do have an uptrend in hospitalizations. And I will turn it over to, uh, from here to Dr. Present.
Thank you. Um, uh, Dylan, if you could pull up my PowerPoint, I have some more of our local data that I can share with you, uh, similar to last week's. While we wait for that, um, are there any questions over the metrics that Nancy just presented?
I've, I've, I've raised my hand, but I'm gonna, um, make comment after you're done.
Okay, great. So just a few things around our, um, our data here in Clackamas County. I gave the graph of the daily case count, uh, for the last two weeks. Um, so really sort of holding steady, there are ups and downs, but no major trend that we can see here. Dylan, if you go to the next slide. Uh, this is our ca-- case count by day since June 1st. Um, you can see that spike a couple of days ago when we had 34 cases, but it really goes up and down. Um, you know, we can all practice to see if we see a trend, but there is a bit of a, a bump in July and an overall decrease, but it's, it's mild. Um, I would say overall, our case counts are just pretty holding steady. Next slide, please. Looking at some of the, um, the breakdown of where these cases are, and, uh, this informs some of the metrics we have. So total cases, we have in yellow up top, as well as our weekly case rate per 100,000. We do need that to be under 30 per 100,000 for three weeks in a row for onsite learning for K through three in our schools. So we are back up at 35.9 this past week, we're not meeting that metric. And then looking at the sporadic, the number of household versus sporadic versus outbreaks down here, uh, really not a big change. Um, you know, everything changes week to week, but I'm not seeing any major trends that are, need to be, um, focused on or pulled out. As far as the number of cases that have successfully been interviewed, this also goes up and down. Um, there have been a number that we have been unable to reach, but that's, um, like I said, it goes up and down per week, and I'm not seeing any major trend, major trend that I need to pull out and bring to your attention. Uh, next slide, please. I also wanted to show you, um, the frequency of reported outbreaks by type. So the vast majority of our outbreaks are, um, in workplaces of various sorts. We also have food and farms, agriculture and food processing plants, uh, long-term care facilities, again, long-term care facilities are, uh, have a different outbreak threshold of just one case leads to, um, outbreak, whereas other places, it's two cases. But this graph overall excludes any outbreaks that are less than five people, just for privacy. So the, I believe in the last week, we've had two long-term care facility outbreaks reported with a total of about eight cases in those two, just in the last week. But these, this, this graph is showing us the number of active outbreaks, not necessarily newly reported. So, um, in the week of August 17th, there are currently 12 active long-term care facility outbreaks, not that they are 12 new ones, but they're still in process that may have been reported, um, earlier. And I believe that is my last slide, and I'm happy to take questions on the data. Um, the, the, the school plan review, I'm actively working on that. But otherwise, our public health department, we're sort of chugging away, working on our cases, working on our staff, um, protocols and workflows, and things have been fairly steady. So nothing major new to report to you today.
Thank you, Dr. Present.
Doctor, just, just one question. I noticed that we have four metrics this week that we are not meeting. Uh, normally, we have two. It's not atypical that the other counties have two or have a little more than us. This is one of the very few times I've seen us actually have more metrics than the other two counties that we are not meeting. Do you have any sense of why that is the case?
I do. Um, these metrics can change from green to red with very small number changes. For example, the hospitalization, if we have one hospitalization more than the prior week, then that turns into a red X rather than a green checkmark. I'm, I'm not seeing any major, you know, major overall trends that, um, like I said, need to be pulled out to, that, that explains those. The one that is concerning, um, so we've persistently had more than 30% sporadic cases, and that is a, um, a reflection of the community widespread. And so that really is something that we want to have at least under 30, if not more, so that we can say that we have control over the spread of the disease and we know where it is. When we have that many sporadic, um, we know that there's ongoing community spread. But that has persistently been one that we have not met. Um, the increase in percent positivity of the tests is also an interesting one. Um, we have had a slight increase, it's not significant in that we are still under 5% positivity. That's one that I'm gonna be watching over the next couple of weeks to ensure that that's not getting significantly greater, because that's another one that looks at, um, kind of gives us an idea of how much community spread there is. And that's one that is colored by, uh, the number of tests done. So given testing shortages, our overall testing numbers have decreased. And so therefore, we have, so it's both the community spread and the fact that, um, there may be more of a focus on higher risk or more symptomatic people being tested that increases that percent positivity rate. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, to, to some degree, I, I guess what my concern was, because we are a more rural county than our, than our cohort, um, I was wondering if we were seeing a, simply a delay in the level of infections in our county, because we're a little more rural, and it appears that it spreads slower in rural communities, simply because there's not as much, uh, social contact. Uh, I just wonder if there's an, if, if it could be a lag as a result of, of us being a more rural county.
Not that I can see. I don't think that's as, as a, a clear reason.
Thank you.
Well, I, I just have a comment, you know, uh, when I read it every day, it looks like we're getting better, but frankly, I don't know about you, but I'm getting tired of seeing you. I'm getting tired of Nancy reporting. I'm getting tired of this issue. I talked to one of our staff, one of our directors yesterday, and he went to the gym, and of course, you're supposed to wear a mask, but they had a kid who wouldn't. He would not wear a mask, and the gym didn't force him out. Frankly, I think they should. Last night on the tri-county meeting, we talked about enforcement. I hate to get to the point where we have to do enforcement, but man, people got to be getting tired of this. Uh, we got to get back to a real life again, and unless people start following the rules, this could go on and get worse during the winter, and, you know, I can't imagine being a student, getting ready to go to college. I imagine you, you can all remember when you did it, how exciting it was, maybe moving into a dorm down at, uh, I went to Oregon State for a while, and that ain't happening. And when it does, across the country, they appear to have to go home. Weeks later, they shut down campus. Next week, I know that Caroline's kids start school, and, uh, there, I, I believe she has two kids, one in each room, doing the studying. Uh, it is very difficult to keep them, uh, active and learning, rather than making excuses, I'm sure. But man, get, start following the damn rules. We need to get past this. And, uh, I was hoping that in four and a half months, when I left here with this, we'd be all behind this, but I do not see an end. And, um, until the, um, we're able to get a, a shot for this, or, or sugar cube, or whatever, this is just a nightmare we live through every single day. And Nancy, I, you probably would rather be the banker. I mean, I, we are doing a great job. The county is doing a great job. Frankly, the state is doing a great job. On the phone last night, we, uh, had a listening post on racial issues. One person was talking about how they went up to Sandy, and, uh, they were proud boys. I'm sure they weren't wearing masks, you know, telling a, a black woman to leave town. What is this? What, how much worse can it get? So please, follow the rules, love one another, and let's get back to normal someday soon. Thank you. So I'm gonna go to Sonia, then Martha.
Couple questions. There was talk about travel restrictions, that we kind of hear that there might be some, and then there aren't going to be travel restrictions, and that comes again. Do we have any update on travel restrictions?
I do not.
I have a little bit. We talked a little bit about this last night. Uh, the governor is considering, or actually, Monday, uh, Leah Horner was on our phone call. Uh, they are still considering it, and that would ban, maybe, it would affect tourism, and they would ban, uh, folks from other, from hot, hot states or hot areas. Uh, so that would, that'd be another big hit for tourism. That's what they're considering still, and they, I think she said they anticipated maybe something coming out next week. I'm not sure. Yeah.
So that would be like somebody from Florida couldn't come fly in here, or what, or California, is that still a hot state? People from California can't drive here? I mean, how would this work?
I think they would Airbnb restrict that, so Airbnb, uh, and other rental companies wouldn't allow that. That's what they did in California during the beginning of this virus, is they shut down, uh, everybody. This way, they're trying to be a little more selective.
Okay, my next question is, so we have 100, 100 and some plans out of 170. I'm interested in understanding, um, why we don't have 170 plans, if there's that many plans we're supposed to be getting, and what is the criteria, just big picture, you don't have to go into a lot of detail, but big picture of what we're looking at in approving those plans from the public health perspective.
Um, I can't answer the first question about where the other ones are. I don't know if Nancy has more information on that. From a public health perspective, we have a review tool to ensure that, um, these sections one through three, they meet all the criteria that are set out in the blueprint. What I'm really looking for is for those who are doing any onsite learning, um, so there is, you know, the possibility for certain populations of, um, uh, special needs children or trade that could potentially have onsite learning. I want to look at their communicable disease plan, um, and ensure that they understand what would happen in a case, um, how they would contact us, and just make sure that that coordination, um, is set and ready. I also want to ensure that they understand that other diseases can happen in schools as well. So the communicable disease plan, I want to see it not being COVID-related only. However, a lot of how you address a COVID case relates to other diseases that might, might happen in schools.
Martha? Mike, Martha?
There we go. Okay, so one of the things that's been popping up in the media is this notion of a twin, twinemic, and the fact that, um, some are recommending we actually get our flu shots now. And I guess my question is, what's the supply chain like for that? And have they actually, have we, has public health actually put out a, you know, a formal recommendation about how that should be handled?
Thank you so much for that question. Yes, I strongly recommend flu shots as soon as you can get them. Having, so we have an, we have a flu epidemic every year. We have outbreaks of the flu. To prevent the flu illness as much as possible is going to help maintain, um, resources to address both flu and COVID. And the flu shot is the, the best prevention we have for the flu. We do, we have started to get shipments of flu vaccine. I know that orders for flu vaccine were greater this year across the state, um, and we do not seem to have, um, supply chain issues that I have heard of, the flu vaccine. Okay, yes, and I believe that we will have, um, we're working on a, um, our annual public health kind of flu vaccine push that will come out soon.
Okay, so that, that will be imminent, and then we can, um, because I imagine we can go to our private providers, to, um, pharmacies, things of that sort to get it, but we just have to see if they have it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we do, and, and it's a new strain, probably. I mean, it's a, probably, yeah.
Yes, every year it is, um, changed a little bit based on the circulating flu strains. Um, it's too early in the year to tell, uh, how well the strain is matched to what's going to be circulating.
Okay, thank you. So you may be talking about two flu shots, though?
I hope so.
Great, okay, thank you.
Well. Yeah, well, um, as we discussed last week, uh, Dr. Present, um, the, uh, the way the numbers are assembled, and we're just looking at percentages, um, I think it really does skew the, the whole picture for anyone who looks at that, uh, that weekly indicator. I guess what I want to talk about a little bit today was, um, the, as far as the schools are really, I guess in essence, starting with the, um, senior care facilities that have these outbreaks, and, you know, in my letter to the governor, and around that period of time, I was trying to point out that, as they are state licensed facilities, um, that there ought to be some, uh, factor, factoring that, in, in a sense, they're isolated, right? They're not, it's not a sporadic, community-wide thing, but it can, it can lead to that, and I, I understand that. But it, it seems to me that as we sit here today, um, not, with no opportunity for receiving any dollars, um, CARE Act dollars to take, um, extra precautions, um, uh, like our neighboring counties do, did receive, um, my question is, is the state providing those senior care facilities in which they license any additional or extra resources above and beyond, um, what, what we're receiving on average as far as state health?
Um, yes. Um, so in the case of, uh, an outbreak or for the initial surveillance testing of long-term care facilities, that will be covered by the state as far as cost for testing. There is a whole new, um, sort of team, uh, at Oregon Health Authority that works closely with the HS for very, um, highly skilled technical assistance around, um, infection control, and they have priorities for personal protective equipment. So I do think that they're, I, I don't know about the dollars and the, um, money going towards that. I'm sorry, I don't know more, I don't know if you do, Nancy, but I do know that resources are prioritized for long-term care facilities, um, and there's a lot of technical assistance that has been built in that is beyond what we have for other, other places.
In addition to that, too, if they do have an outbreak, um, we work with the state here in the EOC through logistics to make sure that they do get the PPE they named pretty quickly as well.
Okay. The, um, related to that, um, we talk about schools, um, which is obviously the hot topic right now, and, and similarly, that any, any building or structure, um, how the air handling ventilation is designed, um, can, you know, be, uh, is obviously a factor into whether or not there ought to even be any numbers of people that are in particular structure or building. So, uh, I'm, obviously, when these buildings are built, they're not really designed, uh, with a kind of a airborne virus or issue in mind, per se, but, um, I'm just really wondering if there is the, 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 the discipline in as far as resources, the expertise out there at the, in the scale needed to really assess these buildings, and not just look at it as far as we, you know, what county they're in, or what's going on in the community as far as COVID, but more so in what, uh, its vulnerability to an outbreak might be because of a, a great handling system versus a very poor one. That seems to be a huge factor in the conversation, but I'm just not really sure that there is that. Um, that seems to be a huge factor in the conversation, but I'm just not really sure that there is that general widespread knowledge and skills out there to do those assessments. Um, what, what, what resources are there to bear right now in the state as far as looking at that aspect?
I don't know. Um, it is a huge concern of mine. I know that in order to have school be safe, it takes an incredible, um, you know, influx of money to do the, the, the changes that are, are considered necessary. And as far as the ventilation, there was just some new, a new, um, study out recently around potential spread through air conditioners. Um, that I think was in the New York Times. There was a link to that. There's not enough known about the virus and its spread. And there's not enough technical expertise to really help all of our schools. Um, and I don't know what's happening at a state or federal level to help with that. And it's a huge concern.
Yeah. Well, um, uh, that's all I really have today. Thanks for, um, thanks for, uh, your assistance and your reporting. Um, and I'm hoping, is there any possibility that those, that, that weekly indicator that they'll be something more robust and more informative than it currently sits today?
Um, I don't see this changing at this point. The best I can do is give you the details that I can give you about what's happening here. Um, and there is, there is, there is a report that shows it over time, so you can see the trends more. Um, but if there's anything in particular that I can give you, Clackamas specific, um, please do let me know that. And I'll bring that for our next meetings. Even though I know you're sick of seeing me, we'll keep coming here as long as you, as long as it's helpful for you.
Well, I, I, that, that, I believe that was Commissioner Bernard's comment, not mine. Um, so, um, uh, I do appreciate you all, uh, I, I really do. And I, I, um, I, I, I don't share that, that sentiment, but I will just, just close with the concern that, you know, when I talk about the numbers being skewed in the percentages, it's still kind of, you look at this week particularly that, you know, um, another county can have dramatically higher numbers, numeric numbers in cases um, on a daily basis. And our numbers are, you know, up and down granted. Um, and yet their numbers at this particular time look better, which is, you know, I don't want to say anomaly, but it's just the way it is, but it, it doesn't paint the picture accurately. And, um, in the summertime, people are recreating and we are known as the, you know, live, work and play. Clackamas County is a, is a place where a lot of other people, um, around the region recreate. And in the summertime, hot weather, rivers, you know, all these opportunities, there's a lot of people, you know, that are just visiting our area. And so when we talk about, um, whether or not we ought to have travel restrictions from state to state, I, I, I think it ought to be, you know, understood that, you know, we know where the airports are. Um, and we know where the, where the state lines are. And, uh, it just, it just kind of concerns me that, um, we're not taking all the precautions we can, or perhaps we should. And, and transit and, and, and density in metropolitan areas, um, there's obviously a relationship to the, the scale of those outbreaks and how, how devastating they've been. So, um, I'll close with that. No comment, no response needed. It was just a comment. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I, I just wanted to put Mr. Bernard's comments in, in a little bit of a context. Um, there are certain professions which most of us, uh, would not like to have to interact with, um, during the course of our lifetime. Police, fire, emergency operation commanders, uh, lawyers and doctors. It really would be nice if we didn't have to interact with those professions at all. Of course we do have to, but I just wanted to put that in a little bit of a context there, so.
I, I didn't take it personally, Chair Bernard. I totally understand. We are, it's, this pandemic is going on and we don't see an end anytime very soon. And I understand how exhausting it is for everyone, so.
And, and I, and I was assured that Dr. President knew what I was talking about.
Yes.
Also, I, I frankly don't know who your predecessor was. Who was your predecessor?
Uh, Dr. Paul Lewis was here prior to me.
So I've never heard of Dr. Par- Paul Lewis. But I've heard of you. Isn't that amazing? I mean, I, I of course know Nancy, but, uh, I never knew who, who was here before you. Anyway, thank you all very much. Uh, it's enlightening. Thank you. Uh, we're gonna, Gary, can we go to the next item?
Yes.
With that, I'm going to announce that the board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a housing authority for the next item. With that, I'd like to induce our esteemed Housing Authority Commissioner, Anne Lenstraw.
Lenstraw, but that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure how to pronounce my name. Still can't do cans. And Gary, what is on the agenda for the Housing Authority?
Uh, we have a consent agenda and I'll ask Mary if she will please read the consent.
Of course, the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. In the matter of approving delegation of budget authority for fiscal year 2020, 2021, approval to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and Health Housing and Human Services for the Shelter Plus Care Homeless Rent Assistance Program and Approval of Resolution 1950 authorizing at the execution, acknowledgement, delegation and delivery of contract documents for the pre-development line of credit from Enterprise Community Loan Fund. That concludes today's Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mary. And does any commissioner want to remove any item from the Housing Authority Consent? Being done, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we consent. Excuse me. I am move we approve the consent agenda for Housing Authority. Did I get it all in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
And it's been seconded that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? With that, I'd ask the clerk to please take the roll.
Okay, Commissioner Lenstraw.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Humberston.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Bernard.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously six, zero. Anne Lenstraw, thank you very much for joining us today and, um, have a great weekend.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to announce that the board will now adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. And Gary, what's after this?
Yes, next commissioners, we have two presentations. The first is presentation of the 2020 Achievement Awards from the National Association of Counties. Ed Nieto from Public and Government Affairs will lead the presentation and then will recognize several county staff, uh, for their work during his presentation. Uh, go ahead, Ed.
Good morning Administrator Schmidt and Commissioners. It's very nice to see you again. I'm Ed Nieto of Public and Government Affairs. First, a little background on NACO. Uh, the National Association of Counties' mission is to help produce healthy, safe and vibrant communities across the country. NACO serves nearly forty thousand county officials and three point six billion county employees. NACO provides a forum for more than three thousand county governments to collaborate on ways to better serve our residents. Each year, NACO recognizes counties for innovative programs and modernized county government and improved service. Programs are judged on innovation, creativity, effectiveness, measurable results, and enhanced levels of citizen engagement and understanding of government projects. This year, Clackamas County received two NACO Achievement Awards. I, I want to note also that, uh, Clackamas County, like so many other counties, had far fewer submissions this year due to the demands of dealing with COVID-19. This morning, we will hear from representatives of the county's two NACO award-winning programs. We'll begin with Stacy Ledington from Transportation and Development's Sustainability and Solid Waste and Catherine Cole from Business and Community Services Library Network Division. The two departments partnered to bring the Library of Things to nine public libraries. Uh, the Library of Things was nominated in the category of Community and Economic Development. Here's the actual award that they'll soon have in their own possession. And with that, I will turn it over to Stacy and Catherine who have a PowerPoint presentation to share with you. Stacy and Catherine.
All right. Thank you. Um, hi, I'm Stacy Ledington with Sustainability and Solid Waste.
And I'm Catherine Cole with Business and Community Services Library Network Division.
So thank you for having us here today to talk about the Library of Things. Are you able to see my screen?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, just a moment. All right. There's our Library of Things presentation.
There you go.
Okay, wonderful. All right, so, um, here we go. So the idea for this project started back in 2017 when my program was looking for creative ways to promote reuse. Uh, we heard about the Library of Things and thought it'd be a great fit and a fun opportunity to work with our libraries. So a library of things is a lot what it sounds like. In addition to checking out books at your library, you can now check out things from board games to gardening tools, kitchen appliances and more. Partnering with the libraries made a lot of sense. The collection supports the library's goals of offering new experiences and learning opportunities. While for us, it aligned with the 2050 vision for materials management, giving people the chance to try things before deciding if they really needed to buy it or providing access to rarely or seasonally used items. It also aligns with performance Clackamas' goals for equity, diversity and inclusion by giving people the opportunity to experience things they might not otherwise have access to. It was also a fun partnership between our two programs and working together to bring something new and exciting to our county residents. The project took about two years, during which we toured other local Library of Things, surveyed the community about what kinds of items they'd like to see in the collection and also worked in several different work groups to identify how to operate the, the collection. And then we launched.
So we launched this Library of Things collection in September of last year in nine of the thirteen libraries that make up the libraries of County. Did I? You did? No. Okay. Uh, nine of the thirteen libraries. And part of what we did when we checked out items is we handed out a little survey with the item. And we got about seventeen hundred respondents to that survey and ninety-five percent of them said they were satisfied with checking out an item. And ninety-nine percent said they would check out again. So really a resounding yes about how people liked this collection. And connected to what Stacy shared about our goals, we are seeing a lot of use of our items. We have over five hundred different things in, across all of the Library of Things and over about four thousand checkouts we've seen up until June. This bar chart shows you, the blue bars represent the number of items and the green bars represent the number of uses. So we are definitely, um, preserving resources by sharing these items across so many people. And while we are thrilled that people like this collection and are checking things out, we really care about the impact as well. And we asked a question. Uh, we asked about what, what was the patron able to do as a result of checking out this item? And the predominant answers were trying out an item you're considering buying, avoiding buying an item that you only need occasionally and saving money. And those were absolutely part of our goals and we are thrilled that the feedback matched our goal. We also asked for general comments and we wanted to share a few of our favorites. You'll see these. I'll let, I'll give you a minute to read these. Uh, the quote, and then at the end it says what the patron checked out. I like how the pasta machine is simpler than they thought. Good, good thing to test. So we are so honored to be a recipient of one of this year's NACO awards and we look forward to adding to these collections in the future. If you have any questions, please reach out to either Stacy or myself and we're happy to answer questions. Thank you so much.
I have a question. Is there a place where there's a list of things still needed or do you have what you need?
The libraries did a lot of, they looked at the survey results and based on that, they identified the items that they wanted. Um, there isn't a list of needed items. There is a list of what we have, um, but that's a, an excellent point. Um, because the libraries have been closed doing, during the pandemic, uh, there haven't been quite as many items checked out, but that's a really great idea for the future. Right now, I don't know of any list of that sort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the work you do and the fact that Clackamas County was recognized again as a leader in innovative ideas.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you Stacy and Catherine. And next it's my pleasure to introduce Jessica Rinner, uh, Civil Engineer Supervisor for Clackamas Water Environment Services. Jessica is going to tell us about, uh, Wes Eighty Second Drive Pedestrian Bridge Improvement Project, which is a mouthful. It was nominated in the category of Risk and Emergency Management. Here is the actual award that again Jessica will soon have. Uh, with that, I will turn it over to Jessica Rinner. Jessica.
Thank you, Ed. Good morning Commissioners and Administrator Schmidt. Clackamas Water Environment Services owns the Eighty Second Drive Pedestrian Bridge, which crosses the Clackamas River and connects the cities of Gladstone and Oregon City. The bridge is a vital piece of our infrastructure with, which supports three sanitary sewer force mains, a fiber optic communication system and a Northwest natural gas main. In addition to providing a safe way for the utilities to cross the Clackamas River, the bridge is also utilized by hundreds of bicyclists, joggers and walkers on a daily basis. During construction of one of the force mains on the bridge in two thousand and twelve, the wooden timber supports under the northern end of the bridge were discovered to no longer be structurally sound. The bridge was briefly closed at that time while temporary reinforcement repair, repairs were made and permanent repairs were planned for a later date. By twenty eighteen, the nearly one hundred year old bridge was in dire need of structural strengthening, new pipe installation and other repairs and refurbishments. I am happy to say that after years of planning, design and construction, the seismically retrofitted bi- bridge is now capable of withstanding a magnitude nine point zero earthquake. The bridge is now the only span over the Clackamas River in the area up to seismic code. The bridge can now provide passage for emergency vehicles and other appropriate personnel should such a catastrophic earthquake occur. The bridge will be an invaluable asset in helping the county recover from such a cataclysmic event. This project supported performance Clackamas goals for the county, which include building a strong infrastructure, ensuring safe, healthy and secure communities. Already a vital piece of in- infrastructure, the strengthened bridge also now better protects the vital sanitary sewer force mains, the gas line and the fiber optic communication system that it carries across the river. The newly installed thirty inch force main strengthens Wes's ability to serve our customers, providing reliable infrastructure for the future. Recognizing the community values of keeping the deck surface of the bridge clear for pedestrians and bicyclists to use, Wes installed the new force main on the downstream side of the bridge deck. I just want to stress that although, although I am the one accepting this award, the project was underway before I even joined Wes. I am just the lucky project manager who got to see the project through construction into completion. This project wouldn't have been successful without the help and support of many others. It was truly a team effort. I would like to thank the following people for their contributions. Wes's Director Greg Geist and Wes's Capital Program Manager Lynn Shakoin for assigning this unique project to me so that I could see it through completion. Clackamas County's Department of Transportation and Development Engineering Division Employees, Joel Howie, Stan Monty and Jim Conrad played integral parts in providing construction management and inspection services. Wes does not often work on bridges. It was very comforting to have the experience and knowledge of these gentlemen to guide us. Sean Jewitt, Kelly French, Shane Abbott and Ryan Hickson of Clackamas County's Department of Transportation and Development Roads Division helped us with quick fixes to signage to keep the public informed of the project progress. Pat Buckland, Wes's Technical Service Coordinator, provided oversight of the sanitary sewer force main work and was invaluable in making sure the work was conducted in a way that protected the environment and limited in a way that protected the environment and limited the risk of sanitary sewage spills. Wes's own field operations and plant operation staff provided key support for this project and coordinated operations of the pump stations and treatment facilities so this work can be conducted around live sewer force mains. Wes's front desk administrative staff, Julie Donovan, Claudine Robinson, and Meredith Nolan for their amazing customer service support and professionalism when fielding calls from the public about the project purpose and progress. I also want to thank Ed Nieto and Todd Logan from the county's Public and Government Affairs for their tireless work in keeping the residents of Clackamas County and the cities of Oregon City and Gladstone informed about the project. The cities of Oregon City and Gladstone helped us keep their residents informed of the project and assisted us in permitting of the project. The design consultants Dowell and Black and Beach for their design and construction services support. The contractors Stellar J for their safe construction of this project in a highly public environment. And lastly, the public users of the bridge who patiently waited while we completed this necessary improvements. Thank you for your time.
Is the bridge, is the bridge behind you there?
Yes, it is. Let me shift the correct way. Todd Logan took this picture, and we put our new Wes logo up there, but the concrete pillars under the bridge are now new and reinforced and bigger, and the 30-inch pipe, if you can see it, is on the side of the bridge behind me.
Well, thank you very much for your work, and I'm not surprised that Wes is winning an award. I had the opportunity to go to New Orleans with them to accept some awards. They're all, you guys are always a step ahead. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to share the good news about these awards, which highlight just two of the many ways Clackamas County is better able to serve our residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gary, what's up next?
Next presentation is of 4H Programs and Projects in Clackamas County. Now, normally, Commissioners, you get this update at the county fair, when you would be meeting at the county fair. But since we're not meeting in person this year at the fair, we're bringing them to you here on Zoom. So we have Wendy Heine from the Oregon State University Extension Service Faculty to present, and she is also inviting in several 4H members who will be presenting with you as well. So Wendy, please go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. So, so you can get them. You're looking for three 4H members. You're looking for Deja Fitzwater, Akua Swift, and Daniel Johnson. So I'm so glad to be with you here today, and I'll give you a brief update on what we've been doing in 4H the last few months. So 4H has never been more important than it is right now. We are leading the charge in support of young people who are being deeply affected by the COVID crisis. So as a reminder, we are a youth development program. We grow youth to be tomorrow's leaders. We're teaching them healthy behaviors and life skills that are going to support them through their transition to adulthood. I've sent, I sent the Commissioners a white paper from the National 4H Council on the importance of reaching all youth at this time with youth development program and about shrinking the opportunity gap that has become just so much more present during this, during this time. And I don't know, I don't think there's a chat today, but just in general, if you Google Beyond the Gap and look for a 4H presentation from National 4H Council, you'll find that paper. So we've become, in extension, even more cognizant of the digital divide in our community, the lack of high-speed internet, the lack of technology in the home, and that's a real disparity that we find in its across geographic, economic, and racial lines in our county. We know that youth are craving the mental and emotional benefits of in-person programming, but we can't ignore the physical safety of our youth and the whole community. So in the meantime, until we're meeting in person, we've been emphasizing virtual programming that includes a sense of belonging and connection with others. And some of the ways that we're, we're trying our best to bridge that digital divide to make sure that 4H is accessible to all youth include identifying families that need help with access. A lot of times, our volunteers have been able to, to help families figure that out. We've provided some loner tablets to families, and our Extension Office parking lot in surrounding area is a wireless hotspot, a free wireless hotspot. We're also providing our volunteers with information about how they can make those meaningful connections online. We want them to be alert to signs of trouble that our youth might be having and to, to continue to help them have that, that sense of connection to others and find happiness and well-being in their lives. So our programs have been fully virtual since March in 4H. Early on, a few things were canceled, but mostly we've been able to modify our meetings, our county events, and our state events to continue with 4H programming. Now, we are under the governor's order for higher education. We're not under other industry orders or other, other, or K through 12. So our requirements might be different from other youth groups or schools that you might have heard of. So we are at a stage right now where we are doing no in-person events until our county is in Phase Two, and we've met OSU's guidelines for resumption to safe programming. Our Extension Office building is closed to the public except by appointment, but I want to assure you that all of our employees are working full-time. We have been this whole time. Some of us are working from home, and some are working from the office. Our clubs are continuing their programming. They're meeting virtually and staying connected by phone and email with members. And we were even able to offer a camping experience with a camp-in-the-box program this year. So looking ahead to fall, for now, we're still planning virtual events. We hope that maybe later in the fall, we might be doing some in-person activities, some modified events, but where we might be able to have small gatherings again. So fair. Normally, we would be at the fair. We aren't at the fair, but it is still Fair Week. Let me tell you, we are still in the middle of it here in 4H. We were already planning our fair when COVID started, and so we had to pivot really quickly to reimagine how that experience could still, could still happen. What were the really important pieces that we could preserve? And our volunteers and youth on our planning committees have been so creative. So we've been able to offer some kind of a virtual fair experience in all of our areas. Every, every different area of study found a slightly different solution that fit their needs, but allowed youth to demonstrate what they've learned and receive feedback from a judge or knowledgeable person. It's been a mix of methods. So in some cases, youth made a video or had a photo of their project that they submitted. In other cases, we did live Zoom interviews. So this year, we had 148 members who entered our horse fair and 386 that entered the county fair. That is about 70% of normal for us for fair participation. And given all the challenges and changes facing our families, we think that that's a phenomenal participation rate. We feel really good about being able to have offered this experience. Community support has been very positive. When we first announced on Facebook that we were not canceling, we were going to find a way. That post received more than 3,800 positive reactions, and 200 people shared it. They were so excited. And we're now just starting to get some media coverage. The Canby Herald wrote a really positive article about our virtual horse fair that came out this month, and as we finish our virtual fair this week and gather results, we look forward to sharing more of those with you. So now I have three 4Hers who are going to tell you a little bit about their experience. So, and I'm sorry you can't pet animals today. Normally, we try and make sure that there's a few you get to meet up close and personal, but today you just get to meet the 4Hers, which that's really the best part, so. Um, okay, Deja, do you want to go first?
I can totally go first. Hi, Commissioner Moore. It's so good to see you. I hope you're all doing well. Sorry, my rabbit. I have my rabbit with me. His name is Hershey. He's a chocolate Polish. Normally, today I would be seeing you at fair, and it's totally a bummer, but I'm so glad to get to see you all at, online on Zoom, which is fantastic. I'm from Milwaukee, Oregon, and I am a third-year intermediate. So this is my last year in intermediate, and next year I will be a senior. Kind of crazy. And I just wanted to thank you all for everything you've done, and I wanted to say how much all of us here in Clackamas County 4H really appreciate you. This year has been so crazy, especially for me. I've been working on all my 4H projects. I didn't miss a single one. I entered over 50 hearth projects this year, and I also still showed my rabbit, and this was my first year showing a sheep, and that was a lot of fun. And my friend Daniel, who's on the call too, he was the one who taught me how to show a sheep, and like, it was super cool. And I was so glad that I was still able to get that experience in, even though I wasn't able to participate at a live fair or a live auction. So I'm really excited about that, and I still got to go to club meetings virtually, which was a lot of fun. And yeah, I just can't express how much it means for all of you to still be believing in us and trusting us and knowing that we are going to get it done, because as youth, that means a lot. And we really rely on other people's opinions, at least I do. And I really appreciate it when, like Ms. Wendy was saying, when people were sharing that post excited about that we were still having some type of fair, because it shows that you all actually care. Like you say, you care, but now we know that you actually care and that you care about our futures, and we really, really, truly appreciate all of you and everything that you do. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Deja. Akua, do you want to share about your experiences?
Hi. I'm Akua. I'm from Canby, and I'm 16. So I do horse 4H, and this year it was a lot different, because usually horse 4H is kind of crazy. There's a lot of people. So we obviously couldn't do that this year, but I still did quite a few classes online. So we just recorded a video of me riding and such, and then we sent that in. And so it was still pretty fun, and my friend came and helped me film the videos and get ready. So we tried to make it like a usual fair, but it was a little bit different. And our club still got to have meetings, which is nice, because I still get to talk to the kids, and I get to see what they're doing with their lives and stuff. And normally, the littler kids, they'll need lots of help filming their fair, or they probably did need help filming their fair videos. They, at fair, I usually help them, so it was kind of hard not to do that this year. And I wasn't able to help them with their fair videos either, because we just tried to limit contact. And so that was a lot different, but it was nice hearing, like, at the meeting, it was nice hearing that everybody did great with their fair videos. And so that was nice to hear. And yeah, so I only did a few classes where I would normally do a lot of classes, and I just used my one project horse. This year, I was going to use my mini, but I can't remember why I didn't this year. Well, it was a little different, because we couldn't do all of the same classes, but it was still pretty fun. I liked it. So yeah, thank you guys so much for listening. Thank you guys for your time.
Daniel, tell us about your experience.
Hello, my name is Daniel Johnson, and I have 15 years old. I live in Sandy, Oregon. And I show sheep, goats, rabbits, guinea pigs, pigeons, and I also do shooting sports and hearth projects along with my community service projects. And this year was definitely somewhat of a hectic year for 4H with planning all of the virtual events. However, I feel like I just have to thank you and Wendy for helping us and supporting us throughout this difficult time. Two kind of representations of challenges this year for 4H were the county fair. And of course, the county fair is a very important part of 4H for most 4Hers, as it is a chance for them to exhibit their projects and also have communication and a fun time with other 4Hers. And I appreciate that this year we were still able to have somewhat of a communication with other people as for this small and old projects. We had interviews with the judges, and we got to talk about our animals. And also, I appreciate that we still got to exhibit our animals and do what we love to do in 4H. And I cannot express my gratitude enough that we were able to present this year. Another challenge that we had was for the Oregon State 4H Spring Classic, which is a knowledge competition. And another way that 4H was able to overcome that is by holding it virtually. And my team for this event had meetings virtually and in person with social distancing and masks. And that was one of the most important things for 4H, for my 4H experience throughout the year, because it was more of a interaction with other 4Hers than county fair was. It was very important. And I have to thank you guys again for supporting us with our 4H projects and for supporting the, um, kind of supporting, I'm sorry. Supporting, um, our 4H journey.
Thanks, Daniel. So we appreciate your time today, and we hope you can see that the investment that Clackamas County makes in the OSU Extension Service and in 4H is making a critical difference in this challenging time. And we'd like to remind anyone watching that our 4H clubs will be accepting new members in October, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And Gary, you have your hand up, and then Paul.
Yes, I understand that Daniel is 4H Youth of the Year. Is that true, Wendy? And can you tell us more about that?
Oh, yeah, Daniel was, he, he is one of the amazing kids with Pamplin Media. Yeah, Deja's a past amazing kid. That's why she's cheering around there. Yeah, so they, I, I think that, I think that tabloid may hit papers this week, but they've announced who those youth are. So he has a special profile in that publication that goes out in all of the Pamplin Media papers statewide.
Congratulations.
Daniel, great.
Thank you very much.
Paul?
Yeah, well, you, all of you ought to be very proud of yourselves, your accomplishments, and your engagement with 4H. I really miss y'all. I miss the fair. I miss seeing all the kids. I, the parades that precede, the Kitty Parade that precedes the fair opening, all the other parades that I participated in, just to be able to see all the kids and all how they're engaged at the fair and throughout. It's just a special time of the year, and we really miss you and really miss the experience. So great to see you. Great to see your smiles. I love the energy, and I just, it's just, it's just makes my day. But I appreciate you all sticking in there and continuing, and we'll look for an awesome 2021 fair.
Ken? Can you mic?
Got me. Paul, I agree with you. I miss the fair very much. It's the livestock, 4H part of it, and the rodeo. And not so much the cookies, but I do like the cookies. But I truly enjoy that aspect of the fair, and we're looking forward to next year, and hopefully we will see you there next year.
But I truly enjoy uh, that aspect of the fair and uh, we're looking forward to next year and hopefully we will see you there next year. On site uh, for the 4H presentations and and all the rest of it. So thank you so much for what you do and um. Wendy, thank you for what you do working with those young folks.
Sonia.
Well, I couldn't miss the opportunity after Ken says he doesn't miss the cookies to say, what? How could he not miss the cookies? So I definitely missed the cookies. Because they accompanied our meeting when we got to also connect with all the kids and the animals. And there is anything better than sitting out there at the fair. With cookies and kids and bunnies and birds and all kinds of animals. Um. Yeah. So really appreciate you taking the time to come and share with us today. It means a lot.
Martha.
Yeah, thanks for being here today. It's always exciting to hear all the good work that you're doing and you're our future leaders. So um, I hope that you consider public service one day. Okay. Uh, because uh, you're already well on the way to doing that. And I have very fond memories of the fair because. My kids grew up in Canby on a farm. And so that was our big, that was our big treat every August was, but our favorite was the uh, big sow with the piglets. Okay, that was the big thing where we always had to go in and and see that. So good work. Glad you're here. Continue. And um, it just always makes us feel good to know that there are future leaders. Uh, that are going to come and really help our county and help our state and help our nation. So. Kudos.
Thank you. And uh, I I have uh, every year have done the auction, so I miss that opportunity. Um. Um, and um, I think one year Ken actually was out in the. Did you work the auction one year? Yeah, you wore that cowboy boots and your cowboy hat. Uh, I remember. Anyway, thank you all very much. I do miss the cookies. Gary.
Sorry, uh, Leah Sunquist is in the attendees room. Can we quickly bring her in? She's asked to speak. She's also part of the OSU, OSU Extension Services.
Please.
Well, Leah's getting on. I'll I'll let you know. Um, so some of our partners are still able to do some of their fun fair things too. Um, the uh, the Oregon Dairy Women are at the Canby Wilco this weekend, Friday through Saturday, if you need your ice cream. Clackamas County Junior Livestock Auction is running this year. Um, they are doing a virtual auction and those pages are live. You can actually bid from now through Saturday and support a local 4H or FFA member. And also, you know, our friends at the Clackamas County Fair and Event Center have been hugely supportive. Um, they're they're still providing us with Clackamas County Fair ribbons and um, and we're helpful in um. Um, sharing some of our our successes like uh, uh, we had some graduating senior posters that they displayed for us and. Um, we greatly appreciate their support.
Leah.
Hi, I wanted to just thank everybody for your support as well as publicly mention that the faculty. And all of the volunteers in 4H and across uh, extension have worked really hard. To make sure that the youth have had a successful fair, even though um, the county fairs are officially closed. We still wanted to make sure that the youth had an opportunity to um, show off everything that they had done. So Wendy. I do hope that all the volunteers know that we appreciate their efforts for pivoting, learning how to do Zoom. Learning how to do Google, learning how to help the youth with videos. Um, we're going to take those four hundred videos and put them onto a uh, disc. So that we can um, keep that information and have it documented. So we will have those four hundred videos available of the youth who have shown. Uh, all the animals and all the things that they've done in hearth. So commissioners, for you, we appreciate your support every year with the budget. This is what it allows us to do and it allows us to give uh, the community the extra support, especially during these times. I talked to the. Um, Oregon's the superintendent yesterday during a rotary meeting. And uh, mentioned that we've got faculty available to do video classes and to help with cooking. And help with anything that the school district might need some other faculty resource support available. So thank you all.
So while you're here, Daniel, uh, what lot number are you? Do you know? Uh, you went on mute again. Where do you go?
I am lot number seventy-nine.
So I I I mean, I I wish I knew how this worked. It's very different. So. I'll play with it. Lot seventy-nine. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. Uh. We'll see you next year, hopefully at the fair. Gary, what's up next?
All right, uh, next commissioners is a public discussion item. It is execution of purchase and sale agreement and deed to Parrot Creek Child and Family Services Incorporated. Uh, I will lead this discussion item. Uh, so commissioners, this request is to approve the conveyance of real property to Parrot Creek Child and Family Services Incorporated. Uh, you have been discussing this for over ten years and today finally we have a proposed agreement for you to finalize and approve. Uh, some quick background for you and this of course is detailed in the staff report, which was uh, expertly written by Andrew Naylor from County Council. But I'll add some highlights uh, or mention some highlights. Uh, Parrot Creek is a residential program for teenage boys. That have been involved in the juvenile justice system. The property was acquired as a result of a nineteen sixty-eight. Levy approved by the voters of Clackamas County. That levy authorized one hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the acquisition of property, construction. And first year of operation for a residential ranch facility for boys on need of removal from home. But amendable to treatment in community rather than placement at the straight state training school. That was the language of the nineteen sixty-eight ballot measure. The property in question is. A county purchased and owned of a total of seventy-eight acres. Of which thirty-two acres are currently used by the Parrot Creek Child and Family Services. Uh, the other parcel is owned by the county but currently unused. Uh, since nineteen eighty-four, Clackamas County has had a formal lease agreement with Parrot Creek Child and Family Services. Where Parrot Creek could use the property, although the county maintained ownership of the property. And that the Parrot Creek would replace and repair property as necessary when activities at the ranch produced damages. Otherwise, Clackamas County was responsible for maintaining the buildings on that property. As you know, over the last fifty-two years, there have been some significant maintenance needs required at Parrot Creek. That has not been budgeted at Clackamas County. But because of this fifty-two year agreement, the county has been responsible for these major maintenance repairs. Uh, because of that, for the last ten years, the county has been in negotiations with Parrot Creek to consider the transfer of this property to Parrot Creek. And that ultimately is what we are proposing for you today. Uh, by conveying this property will save Clackamas County significant expenses. Um, from the lease mate, the lease uh, oversight as we have had for several decades. As well as relieving us of the responsibility of maintenance of the facilities on this property. It helps avoid or mitigate potential liabilities that may rise. Uh, by us holding the title to this property and if there were to be subsequent damages to the buildings that we are unable to maintain. This transfer is proposing a total cost to Parrot Creek of one dollar, which is really symbolic for this transfer. Um, Parrot Creek has committed to continuing use of this property for the purposes of the original ballot measure. Including providing support to Oregon and Clackamas County youth and family support services. As part of this deed agreement, Parrot Creek also has agreed to a revisionary clause that if Parrot Creek or its successors. Uh, do not provide the social services and childcare services they are currently providing. Then the title of this property will revert back to Clackamas County. So that's a really high level of what this agreement uh, proposes. I know commissioners, you've all been intimately involved in these conversations for over a decade. But today their request is for you to formally approve the conveyance of this property. Currently owned by Clackamas County to Parrot Creek Child and Family Services Incorporated. And as such, it removes us from the liability and responsibility of maintaining those buildings. Um, Andrew Naylor is here uh, to help me answer any questions you may have about this proposal. Thank you.
I don't see any questions. Uh, thank you. I mean, I literally have been working on this for. Almost twelve years. So it's been a little longer than that. Um, Parrot Creek's a great organization. Provides great uh, services. Uh, luckily I never had to go there. Um. But uh, I I I think an important message also is that this provides Parrot Creek. With additional opportunities of investment, not only from the state, but private investment. And it's been a little in uh, for needed for a long time. So. I've got no questions. We'll go uh, to open the for public comments and turn it over to Dylan.
Dylan.
All right. Thank you, Chair Bernard. I'm Dylan Blalock with Public and Government Affairs. I'll be coordinating both public comment for this specific public discussion and later on for general comment. If any attendees would like to provide a comment specific to this public discussion. Execution of a purchase and sale agreement and deed to Parrot Creek Child and Family Services. You can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom, or if you're on the telephone, we don't have anyone on the telephone. Uh, so again, public comment on any topic in just a bit, but if you have a comment related to Parrot Creek, please select the raise hand button on the Zoom bar now. That's at the top or bottom. Depending on your device. Seeing none, Chair.
All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to defer to the chair to make the motion. You have been working on this for many years. So um, I I will stand down.
All right. Uh, I, we. Weird. Approve the execution of the purchase and sale agreement and deed to Parrot Creek Children and Family Services, Inc. Is there a second? It's to move and second it. Thank you, Paul. Uh, is there any further discussion? With that, I'll ask our county, our clerk, not county clerk, our clerk of the board to please poll us.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Humberson.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
And Chair Bernard.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you and good luck, Parrot Creek. Uh. I think you should talk to those people from 4H. There's a lot of land out there.
Yeah, actually.
Yeah, they could use for uh, uh, pasture, uh, for farming, all kinds of things, a great partnership with 4H. Anyway, thank you. And uh, with that.
Uh, next is a consent agenda.
I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda, please.
Hey, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Estacada. And the Community Development Division for the Community Development Block Grant Funding for an. ADA ramp at the intersection of Main and Northeast Sixth in Estacada. Approval of a federal subrecipient grant agreement with Ant Farm, Inc. to provide youth opioid prevention and early screening for rural Clackamas County in Sandy and Estacada. Approval of a federal subrecipient grant agreement with Northwest Family Services. To provide youth opioid prevention and early screening in rural Clackamas County, Canby and Malala. And approval of a subrecipient grant agreement number two with Oregon Impact. For youth marijuana and substance abuse prevention efforts in Clackamas County. Approval of a grant renewal agreement from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. For the Coordinated Housing Assess System. Approval of a grant agreement from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, Continuing of Care Program for the Hope Leasing Program. For the purpose of providing permanent supportive housing. Approval of a grant renewal agreement from Department of Housing and Urban Development Supportive Housing Program for the Housing. Our Heroes Project for the purpose of providing permanent supportive housing to veterans. Approval of a grant renewal agreement from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development Supportive Housing Program. For the Rentwell Rapid Rehousing Program. Approval of amendment number one with Care Oregon for COVID nineteen still still a nation system. Stilovation funding. Stabilization funding under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the city of Beaverton. For provisions of permit processing and building inspection plan review services. Approval to apply for a safe route to school infrastructure grant. Approval of amendment number two with Murray Smith for design services for ADA improvements. Approval of a contract with Wallace Engineering. For design services for the twenty twenty-one paving packages. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Business and Community Services, approval of local grant agreement amendment number two between Clackamas County and Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon. To provide a small grants program on behalf of Clackamas County. In an effort to support the local business community impacted by COVID nineteen pandemic. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement from Clackamas County, Canby Fire District and the city of Canby for distribution and community service fee funds. Collected from Columbia Distributing Rural Strategic Investment Zone. Approval of COVID nineteen Emergency Business Assistant Program Forgivable Loan Agreement to provide matching funds to increase available funding. For grants to local small business communities impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Approval of a loan agreement project number. One seven one nine six nine eight amendment number one between Oregon Business Development Department and Clackamas County Business and Community Services Economic Development. For the Clackamas County Land Bank Authority. Under Technology Services, approval of the purchase order for Pivot Three Security Hardware and Storage from Reese Security Solutions. Under Community Corrections. Approval of amendment number one to the subrecipient grant agreement with the Institute for Intergovernmental Research for the Building Bridges Demonstration Project. And under Service District Number Five, which is our street lighting. A resolution certifying the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one assessment role for Clackamas County Service District Number Five. And underwater environment services. Approval and adoption of Water Environment Services, five-year sanitary and surface water program capital improvement plan. Fiscal twenty fiscal year twenty 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 twenty-one and fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mary. Take a breath.
I will.
That was some long ones. All right, with that, uh, do any commissioners to wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Uh, two seconds, Paul and Martha. And uh, any further discussion? Mary, please poll us.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Humberson.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
And Chair Bernard.
Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. Next, we move on to pub. Gary, what's up next?
Next is public communication, Chair.
And Dylan is going to help us. Uh, so he'll tell us how to do that.
Very good. Thank you, Chair. Uh, this is the time of the meeting for general comment related to any county issue. If any attendees would like to provide a comment. You can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom. Chair, I also have at least three emails thus far to relay after we take any Zoom and phone calls.
Okay.
I do not see any hands going up, so I will go to the emails. First is from H. Palmer Kellum of Oregon City. Dear Commissioners, I was born in Oregon City in nineteen fifty-one. I graduated from Oregon City High School in nineteen sixty-nine and Oregon State University in nineteen seventy-five. I'm pretty much a local. I am writing you today. I am writing you today because I am very concerned about the effects that other political entities are having on the Willamette River. I have lived on the banks of the Willamette for over 50 of my 69 years. I was selected by the Oregon State Marine Board to be on their lower Willamette River Rules Advisory Committee earlier this year. In the past legislative session, Representative Karen Power of House District 41 co-sponsored House Bill 2351, which eventually became law. The essence of this bill is that it amended the Willamette Greenway to allow the Marine Board to consider the effects of waves on the environment when considering rules for recreational boat usage. The true effect of this law is the Oregon Legislative and Executive Branch have used it as a club to force the Marine Board into changing their long-term compromise for river usage and forced them to significantly eliminate selected types of river usage in what is known as the Newburgh Pool, essentially from above the falls in Oregon City to Newburgh. Since these new rules went into effect on July 1st, 2020, a significant portion of the boats that used to recreate in this area are now in the river below the falls from Oregon City to Milwaukee. It is a zoo out there in the evenings and on the weekends. It is getting unsafe for all river users. If that isn't bad enough, the city of Portland, through their river plan, South Reach Plan, are in the process of petitioning the Marine Board to make the Willamette a slow no-wake zone from the Steel Bridge to adjacent, from the Steel Bridge to adjacent Elk Island. I am forwarding a copy of their update from August 12th. The Marine Board is currently having their staff develop rules for making portions of this part of the river a pass-through zone, which would eliminate certain river activities in certain areas. Portland must not feel this is restrictive enough because the Marine Board plan is nowhere near as restrictive as a slow no-wake zone. Once any of these restrictions go into effect, the boaters will be forced into the only area left between Milwaukee to Oregon City. Where boaters could once choose from Newburgh down to the city of Portland, this would be all they would have left. Bottom line, there is a battle going on out there over how we are going to recreate on the Willamette River. Once they close down another portion of the river, it won't be safe for anybody. What am I asking of you? The residents of Clackamas County deserve a strong voice in this battle over river usage. I am humbly beseeching you to get active with legislature, the governor's office, and the city of Portland before they cut the Willamette up into such small pieces that no one can use the river safely. Now is the time to act before some of these policies are set in concrete. Sincerely, H. Palmer Kellum, Jr. Okay, I will move on to the second email. Still seeing no hands. This is from Darren Gunter outside of Wilsonville. Dear Board, please be aware that earlier this week, Chair-elect Tootie Smith on her Facebook page is claiming that, quote, "Clackamas Commissioners sneak in a new tax without public hearing on a 5-0 vote," end quote. She is referring to the Children's Safety Services levy. Forget about the sneaking and tax part, but the video that she links to from last week's meeting clearly shows that you did take substantial public comment then, and you probably did before. I do not know if Smith just simply missed it or is intentionally misleading her followers, but this serves to wrongfully inflame tension amongst residents. If any of you have an existing personal connection to Smith, I ask you to reach out and correct the matter. This is just one of several troubling Facebook posts of hers that seem to be pouring gasoline on no fire and then lighting it. Darren Gunter. Okay, and the last one, from Thelma Hagen-Miller in Oak Grove. Dear Chair and Commissioners, in the good old days, I would sit in on your business meetings and often gave testimony during the public comment timeframe. Since things changed because of the COVID pandemic, I have had to change also, but have sat in on many of the meetings you have held by Zoom. I have also become very familiar with the Zoom process. You are now following with a staff person, often Dylan Blaylock, controlling the Zoom part of the process. I can only join the meetings by telephone because my computer does not have either a camera or a microphone connected. I sat in on the meeting you held at 6:00 PM on Monday, August 17th, 2020, when you convened as the Board of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. I was prepared to hit star nine when Dylan directs to do so to see if anyone else wants to make public comment before closing that part of the meeting. Closing the public comment part of the meeting never took place at the NCPRD meeting. Therefore, I was not provided the opportunity to give my input. So here is what I would have said, and I would appreciate having this read into the record. My name is Thelma Hagen-Miller, and I reside in the unincorporated area of Clackamas County known as Oak Grove. I am therefore also a resident within the NCPRD and have been a continuous follower of the DAB District Advisory Board bylaw discussions. I appreciate the NCPRD staff's attempt to present what they think is a workable solution for DAB Distribution of Representation and Responsibility, parentheses, CPOs, Population Taxes, SDCs, et cetera, in parentheses, for the people that will eventually be appointed to the DAB for the district by the BCC. I respectfully disagree with staff's proposal. Every member of the DAB should be responsible for everything that takes place within the district. I also do not believe that decision-making elected officials should be holding any appointed seats on the DAB. That, to me, is a direct conflict of interest. All DAB members should be at large. I still remember the days when we were discussing the move from three to five county commissioners. A committee was selected to take up the issue of districting the commissioners within the county. After much committee discussion, districting was deemed to be too difficult to do. So all five of our current commissioners are responsible for all things affecting us countywide. That is the same way it should be in the DAB. All appointed DAB member positions, whatever that ends up being, nine or 11, should be at large. Respectfully submitted, Thelma Hagen-Miller. Chair, I see Gary has a hand up.
Dylan, do you have any comment, an email from Sarah Ward, who had feedback for the meeting today?
No. I'm sorry, I don't see anything in the Clacko News inbox. I don't believe I have anything in my email either. Did I miss something, Gary?
It may have come to the BCC email account. We haven't sent it to you yet, so we'll follow up on that.
All right, somebody, okay.
Yeah, it's, it did just spring up on my, in my inbox, so at the beginning of the meeting.
So that went to the BCC mail that Dylan doesn't have access to. So well, unfortunately, it'll be next week unless you wanted to read it, Commissioner Savis.
Let me find it here. Okay, I'll, I'm happy to read it. So hello, my name is Sarah Ward, and I live in the unincorporated north urban area. The Metro South Community Advisory Board recently had its first meeting. I'd like to know if anyone on the board will be involved in selecting the location of the new transfer station and what the public might expect from the location selection process. Thank you.
As far as I know, we haven't been asked, but that's something we could check on. I don't know, has anyone heard anything besides that initial update we got? Gary?
Our staff has been involved in this. Our sustainability staff and transportation development, they are part of a staff work group with Metro to look at options, but eventually, yes, it will be presented to the boards, you, to give input on. But it's not that far in the process yet, is my understanding.
Yeah, I, I would probably say that there's been a little bit of buzz on this since the Pampplin Media wrote an article. So is drawing attention to that. I'd just let anyone who not aware of what's going on, that what it's about. Earlier this year, I believe, or maybe late last year, that we were invited to a, at the Metro South Station and Metro introduced.
I remember that.
So we know that it's going to be, it's going to be a while before they actually find sites. And I don't know if any sites have been identified as of yet, but they are looking in the region. And, but there's not, nothing been identified as of yet. But the way the article was written, you know, I think it named Gladstone unincorporated areas and communities along the I-205 corridor essentially as perhaps landing sites for that. But I don't think there's, I'm not aware of any particular piece of property has been identified. And we wouldn't know that, that would be Metro, who would be the source of information for that.
I, I heard they were going to fill Lake Oswego and Lake Oswego.
Good luck with that.
Terrible, Jim.
No site has been selected yet, and our staff will email you with an update board. So thank you.
All right, Dylan, do we have anything else?
No, sir. I see no hands up, and that was the last email.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to county administrator updates.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd like to share some good news this week at Clackamas County. First, as you know, Commissioners, and you just approved on your consent agenda, Clackamas County has partnered with the Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon, or MISO, to distribute $420,000 in grant funding to small businesses that are hurting because of the COVID-19 pandemic. This program provides grants ranging from $2,500 to nearly $10,000 to Clackamas County businesses. And we've received two positive comments from two recipients of the grant, the grant's first round already, that I'd like to share with you. First, from John Staler of Full Fast Technology writes, "You have extended to me a lifeline to keep me in business. Two years ago, I left my full-time position to pursue a dream to be a part of the electric vehicle industry. 2020 started off as what was going to be my very best year yet. That was not to be. One client was hit very hard economically and had to drop all my services. Another trickled down to nothing. Your grant will help me pay the bills and keep me rolling. Your award of the grant comes just in time." Another note is from Ivana Erby, who runs a small preschool program called IQ Preschool. She wrote, "Following the governor's orders, I had to close my preschool's physical doors in March for an indefinite time. Furthermore, my husband has just unexpectedly lost his job, and we had to help our children with distance learning. It was a tremendously stressful time financially and emotionally for our family. I learned how to operate Zoom, and within a week, I transferred my curriculum to fit my new online program. The grant from Clackamas County will help me with preschool operational costs and to purchase new electronic equipment for my distance learning program. It will also help me upgrade my preschool's physical space so it will better fit the actively changing situation and stay current with the needs of the children in my care." So thank you for those notes from John and Ivana. And thanks to MISO, and most importantly, thanks to our staff in Business and Community Services for helping put this grant program together and for making it happen. So great news to share with you there. Next, Commissioners, a reminder, well, you know this, but for the public, the commission will be on a board recess for the next two weeks from August 24th through Labor Day, September 7th. Your next business meeting will be three weeks from today, on Thursday, September 10th. Per the county code, as county administrator, I have signing authority to sign contracts on your behalf during this recess. However, I will only sign such a contract if it is absolutely urgent and cannot wait for your return. Otherwise, we will save it for when you return. And of course, I will notify you the day I do sign any contracts on your behalf, and then we'll ask you to ratify them when you return. But just a reminder for the public, the board will be on recess for the next two weeks. And then finally, Commissioners, today is a bittersweet day for us at Clackamas County. And I'm going to ask Mary Rathke to turn her camera on, please, Mary. I know I'm surprising you, Mary, but please turn your camera on if you're still at your desk. Come on, Mary, there you are.
I am. Hi, you guys.
This is Mary Rathke's last day as clerk.
Mary.
This county Board of Commissioners. Mary has announced her retirement from Clackamas County. After 31 years of serving the Clackamas County, the public, and in particular, the Commissioners of Clackamas County, Mary has worked with every single county commissioner since 1989, working with them and serving them and serving our entire organization. Now, Mary has said she wants no party, she wants no public recognition, but I'm sorry, Mary, we can't let you go that easily. While Mary's still working with us another week and a half, this will be her last business meeting as clerk of the board. So I just want to say, Mary, you have been such a model of public service. You model our core values every day. You are the nicest, kindest person I think any of us have ever met in our lives. You care deeply about service and public service. You give so much to everyone internally and externally at Clackamas County. Your knowledge of how county government operates is unrivaled. We will never be able to know all that you know. You have been a lifesaver for me personally, for prior county administrators, county commissioner who's worked with you. So Mary, I just want to say, I love you, I thank you. I want to recognize you for all that you have done for Clackamas County. And Commissioners, if you want to say anything, this would be a great time.
Thanks, you guys.
I'm mute, Jim.
You're on mute.
Martha.
Yeah, Mary, I'm really going to miss you. You were like Clackamas County for me, and one of the reasons I wanted to come back, when I had a chance to come back, was Mary, you were there. And I remember when I first was appointed in 2003, that you made me this beautiful welcome sign that you put in my office, and it was in the old building, remember that old building? When we were three, and I will never forget that act of kindness. And you've been nothing but kind and good to me, and I'm really going to miss you. I hope we can still get together once in a while and check, check in and see how you're doing and how your son's doing. And thank you, Mary, for everything. I'm really going to miss you. This is a little, it's certainly making me feel as if, wow. It's been a long time, and I know that your heart's still going to be with the county, no matter where you go, what your next, what your next journey is. So I still want to be a part of it, though, so. I love you, Mary.
Love you too.
Okay, okay.
I have to tell you, Mary, the very first day I walked in the office, how gracious and friendly and welcoming you were, and still are. Every day that I have come into that office, it is high Ken and a beautiful smile. That will definitely be missed. But I think the thing that really sticks with me is, is, you know, I was the new kid on the block four years ago, and how welcoming and gracious you were. I don't think I'll ever forget that. You really do model the core values of Clackamas County. And I just hope that the rest of us during the remainder of our service for this county can model how you treated us and how you treated the public for the rest of our careers. Good luck in the next adventure.
Thank you.
Paul.
Well, Mary, I was going to say my comments, my compliments, my, my words about you for my Commissioner comments, but voila, here we are, so I'm going to, I'll just go now. I want to, Ken, I think you very elegantly said a lot of what Mary duly deserves. She, I, I do also, Martha, remember, and Mary, I, the old building, right? My first visit, I met Mary in 1997 at the County Commissioner Building. And, you know, fond memories of the building, you know, the train, when the train went by, it rumbled the building. It was three commissioners back then. It was, I believe, at the tail end of that building, it was Commissioner Kenimer, Commissioner Soa, and Commissioner Jordan, Michael Jordan at the time, I believe. And okay, yeah, that's right, it's switched over. It was, at the first, it was Michael Jordan, then it was Martha. So, yeah, and your, when I first became a commissioner in 2011, January 2011, like Ken said, very welcoming, greeted me, we already knew each other, but it was, it was, your, every morning, I always looked forward to, good morning, Paul, and good morning, Mary. Every morning, and I missed that because of COVID, right? We haven't had that, so it's, we haven't had that, that interaction. So I, I really miss you. And I just want to say that how, what a hard worker you are. And a lot of people don't know this, but, you know, I would come in on Fridays. I would, I would sometimes come in at night, I would come in early in the morning, and, and there's Mary. And she doesn't really need to be there, and I, sometimes I encourage her to go home, but she's cleaning, she's keeping that place tidy, she's doing work, she's going above and beyond. Always, always. And you're always there, and I just, you know, I, I think you exemplify really all the things that any And you're always there, and I just, you know, I, I think you exemplify really all the things that any employer would want to, want an employee to be. And you're more than an employee. You are a staple of Clackamas County. And there, I, over the years, I've had so many compliments of people because you are so welcoming to, to people that come in there, whether they're angry, or they're happy, or they're concerned about something. You have, you have just done such a wonderful job making people feel respected, making their concerns be heard. And, um, and that's, I just, I'm gonna really miss you. We're, we're gonna miss you, and we all love you. I just want you to know that. And so, if you ever realize that retirement's not for you and you want to come back, I hope, I hope, I hope there's a door that the Administrator will open back up for you. And, um, and thank you so much for your years of service on behalf of Clackamas County.
Thank you, Paul.
Mary, gosh, I don't think I can get through this without crying. I'm just getting all choked up hearing everybody talk. I just think the example and the way that you model servant leadership is such a gift to all of us, and it's gonna be very, very missed. So, I echo everyone when we say that we love you and we're gonna miss you, and, you know, please let's stay connected. Just really, really appreciate you so much.
Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you. And Mary, I, first, Paul, you ruined it all. I thought I was the only one that she said, "Good morning, dude." Matter of fact, I, Mary's here on Sundays and Saturdays sometimes, too, when I come in. I think that in all the 12 years I've been here, there's always been a slight competition on who's here earliest, and I think I'm the winner. But, uh, so, Mary has always been welcoming, gave, I gave hope that the day would be a great day with her smile. Uh, she will be missed. We do love her, and, uh, there was one more thing I had to say. Oh, I, uh, and she knows where the bodies are buried. You, you always hear that, and I'm sure there's some great stories that, once you leave, maybe you'll open up and tell me some of those. But she was hired by Mike Swanson, the first county administrator. Mike Swanson was the city administrator when I was mayor of Milwaukee, and when I left to come here, Mike said, "You can always trust Mary." And that has been true. So, thank you, Mary. You will be missed. And also today, yesterday, we heard that Mary Jo Cartesany was also retiring. Mary Jo was my policy coordinator for about 11 years. And I knew Mary Jo when she was a little girl down the street from where I was raised. And, uh, my first day, I came to work one month, about a month and a half early after I got elected, which, by the way, so will Commissioner Smith be doing. At least she'll be coming to executive session. I felt that because Bill Kenner let me sit in when I got elected, that she should also have that opportunity. But, uh, it's, it's, uh, now, what was the purpose of that? What I was gonna say there? Oh, Mary Jo, I'm sorry about Mary Jo. So, I've, uh, she's, uh, she will also be missed. She's, uh, become a dear friend. When I walked in the office, Mary Jo was sitting there, and I thought, boy, she looks familiar, because I hadn't seen her in like 40 years. And, uh, you look, and then I thought, well, she looks just like her mother. And so, I said that, and, and so, we were introduced to one another. And, uh, Mary Jo and, uh, Mary have become close friends, and I hope to have them both over for dinner when we can safely have dinner, uh, out at the ranch. So, uh, thank you, Mary, for all you do, your smile and your hope.
Thank you. I'm very embarrassed, and I'm a person of few words, but I've been honored to be a county employee all these years and work with the tremendous, wonderful people. You and past Commissioners, past county administrators, you're all wonderful, and this is a great place. And I'll miss Mary Jo, too, but I'll still see her, and she was wonderful. She was 20 years in Tuolatin, and then she came here, and so. Anyway, thank you so much. I'll miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. That's my administrator update today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Communication, first up is Paul.
Yeah, well, uh, just to keep a little bit of continuance, I, I did want to say a couple of words about Mary Jo as well. I, you know, when I became a Commissioner, she was already on-boarded, and I appreciate her positivity, her energy, her, she, she was, she's always, and still is, a person who's very bubbly and fun, and so, I, I will miss, I'll miss Mary Jo. So, I guess that's, uh, that's how things go, and it's always change, and, uh, but we'll all cross paths in the future, I'm sure, and, um, maybe we can get together for some kind of a barbecue or something at some point in time. So, what I wanted to just touch on, uh, just last night's, um, listing session on racism. There's one thing I wanted to talk about a little bit, but I didn't want to get into a lot, a lot of discussion, but, you know, there's, I, I, I kind of mentioned, um, you know, my work and some of my different areas of the, of the, where I grew up, and there were some areas that were predominantly, uh, black neighborhoods. And when I, when I, when I was there, I felt, I, I felt welcomed and, um, and comfortable. But I, I, I will say that that wasn't universal, that, you know, in that situation, sometimes I was kind of like the different guy because I looked different. And, and, and that's understandable. That's, it's, it's natural, but what I really wanted to touch on last night, and my, my grandmother probably really instilled this into me in her experience, when all of my grandparents immigrated in the early 1900s, um, as we were exiled out of Constantinople, Turkey, uh, because there was a, just a mass genocide that was occurring there. So, fortunately, my, my family members escaped, but, um, was the language barriers. You know, we can look different and be treated different, but sometimes because we speak a different language, we're also treated different. And I think that is something that I never understood why my father forbid me to speak Greek, because I was raised speaking Greek. And, um, and, and the reason was, he told me, the reason was, "Well, I struggled in school, so I don't want you to struggle in school with two languages." And then I realized what it was really all about, because if I spoke a different language and my brothers and sisters spoke a different language, that we would be cast as outsiders and different people. And really, in, as we grew up, we really were, um, not because of our language, but frankly, because, well, it, it was that as well as, as the color of our skin, and, and I think a lot of people assume that, um, you know, we were, well, it was kind of obvious that we were not the average white American family. And I, I guess it's, it's, it's all, it's all good, um, in, in a sense, but I, I do remember again how our neighbors treated us differently, and I never understood that until years later. My family still spoke Greek and other languages. We had a lot of other, other languages in our family. My, my grandmother spoke 13 different languages. So, you can imagine with friends from, from all those different languages that you would have people over, and the neighbors knew that. And so, we were, you know, I, I don't think anyone really knew, um, uh, what, how, again, being treated differently is because of whether what you look like or what you, the language that you speak, but I just want to just, um, just share that, that, um, it's, it's somewhat natural. I don't blame people for, if you're not comfortable with whether you're wearing something that is obviously very different, or you are a different skin color, or a different language, whatever, that you're not necessarily welcome. Uh, you, you know, you're, you're different. And I guess I'm okay with that, um, and I think that we got to be cognizant that, that sometimes just even speaking is, is something that people fear, because they'll know that they're not speaking English clearly or perfectly. Another thing I wanted to talk about was today. I thought, yeah, that, I think that was it. That was it. I, I just want to wish everyone a, a safe, uh, the remainder of the summer. We're almost at the end of summer. Falls around the corner. It's not that far away, folks. So, um, just want everyone to be safe. Uh, we have a holiday weekend coming up, uh, and I just want to just wish everyone a safe, uh, holiday. Thank you.
You.
Oh, I remember what it was. I remember what it, there is, there, I, I just saw it here. So, um, last week, we approved the Children's Safety Levy, and, um, uh, I know that the, um, time to, or the deadline for any kind of endorsements or borders pamphlet statements are around the corner. So, I just wanted to share, um, with my colleagues, um, just the concept of maybe, um, joining in on some kind of a statement from us jointly. So, I just want to just put that out there. I'm willing, I don't know who wants to write. I'm happy to, to maybe put a draft together. I don't have any language in mind. Um, if someone wants to take the lead, I'm happy to take the lead, or we can share. But, um, uh, I, I just kind of want to invite everyone to have that opportunity. We've done that as a board in the past. Um, I think we did it on, uh, I believe, either, I forgot which of the two measures we put on the ballot. Uh, one was the, uh, gas tax, I believe, and can't remember what the other one was, but we've done it before. And I know it's, our staff cannot be involved in that because it's, it's, um, um, political. So, therefore, I just want to just put that out there. You have my number, and, um, have a safe summer.
Okay.
All right. Uh, next up would be Martha.
Oh, well, I just want to thank you, Paul, for that, and go ahead, and let's get something pulled together for the Children's Levy. I think that's a good idea. So, thank you for bringing that up today. Well, I not only am going to really miss Mary, um, because she was, um, the mainstay in this office for me for so many years. But I, she was with us when we had Donna. Donna passed away when, um, when I was a new Commissioner. Terry Ferrucci, Brenda Davis, Penny, those were the original, and Jenny Van Leeu was there, and Sherry, uh, Sherry Kenner, and that was the original group. It was, um, quite a wonderful group of people, and we were the ones that transitioned from that old building. Paul, you're right. When the, uh, train came by, the whole building shook, and I always wondered if we were going to fall through the floor in the bathroom because it was pretty spongy. And, uh, I remember that me, our meeting room was not this wonderful, beautiful, whatever. It was kind of this little dark meeting area, you know, where you really didn't have much room for anybody, but it was, uh, it was fun, and I learned a lot back then. And particularly, I do want to thank Mary again, because when I was there and I didn't know anything, she took me under her wing. She was the one that put the welcome sign up, and, um, I have never forgotten that, and I hope that we can continue. And also, when I was sworn in as a Senator, she came down to Salem to watch me get sworn in. And I'll never forget that. She and John Mantegna went out of their way to come down, even I had kind of deserted the, the Commission. I'm glad I did it. It was a good experience. We got a lot of work done for veterans, but, boy, I couldn't wait to get back on the Commission because I think that what we do is so much more hands-on, and, uh, it, it really is a better place to be. And also, as far as MJ goes, you know, we would always joke about our Italian heritage, you know, and we, we'd kind of talk about our experiences with our family. And the most fun time I had with her was when we were heading to Long Beach, Long Beach for a NACO conference, and she, I stopped, we stopped off to see her relatives before we went to the office, and I felt like I was home again. It was just hysterical. Her family was lovely and wonderful. They fed us, as Italians do. They got us off to the airport, but then we had to go back because MJ le- left her wallet. She was so worried, and I just cracked up. I said, "Who cares? We'll be fine." No big deal, but we stayed on the Queen Elizabeth together, okay, which we thought was going to be a very cool experience, and it kind of was. But you, we really didn't quite realize that it was just an old boat, okay? And the plumbing didn't really work all that well, and it's supposed to be one of the most haunted boats in, you know, in the United States or whatever. So, you walk everywhere, and there's a ghost story associated with it. So, we're, we're trying not to be our Italian, you know, selves and just kind of go ghost hunting, um, on the soul boat, but it was so bad that the last night, we just looked at each other, and we said, "We gotta find a new hotel room, okay?" We're off the boat, so we, we went, we actually switched the last night to another hotel, uh, because the boat was just getting so, so bad. You know, you had a porthole, but it was one of the most fun times I've had, and Paul, you were there with us. I remember you were at Long Beach with us, and she was, yeah.
It was a Queen Mary.
A Queen Mary, and she was staffing, she was staffing both of us at the time, but that really was fun times, and I'm really gonna, I'm really gonna miss that. And, um, I will promise at some point, when all this COVID stuff is over, that I will do homemade ravioli and Ken's favorite lasagna and have us all here. Or, or if you want to host it, Jim, I'll bring the food to you. It's up to you. But, um, the other thing I want to say, Mary, before she left, has tried to convince me that I need to give up my old Darlene Hooly furniture, because the furniture you have was the furniture that they had ordered for me when we were getting new furniture. But, so that didn't happen, but I have to be honest with you. I like the Darlene Hooly furniture. You know, it's kind of old and funky, and, uh, Gary, if we could get that, you know, Mary ordered a plaque. She's gonna get mad at me for saying, she says, "You have to get the new furniture. You can't have that off." And I'm like, "No, let's just put the plaque on it, the Darlene Hooly plaque," and I, I kind of like my old funky furniture. So, um, when another Commissioner comes on, you can give them the new stuff. And then we'll put a plaque on it for Jim. I say we put yours, put a plaque, Jim Bernard's, you know, like they do in the legislature. We got to just put our names on everybody's.
I carved it in the top.
Oh, you did? Yeah, and, and just, just one thing, my Filipino family's coming tonight. They're going to be here for a few days. Uh, my sister's grandson is going to the University of Portland. Uh, they needed a place to stay. I'm not overly worried about COVID. They're both, they're nurses and medical folks. Um, it's interesting. I think UP is putting kids together in pods so they can go back and forth to the campus, so I'll find out a little bit more about how that works, um, when they come. I'm really excited about that because this is a longstanding relationship from when I was a kid, so, uh, that'll be fun. Other than that, I just, for the county, I just keep doing all the reading I'm supposed to do, trying to keep up with things. You know, trying to, trying to make sure that, you know, we're running the county with my colleagues in a way that's moving ahead. So, that's all I've got today. Okay.
Thank you. Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to use my time today to, uh, since we are going into a, a, a short vacation, to say thank you to a whole bunch of people for, uh, a lot of volunteer work in, in, uh, three different projects. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Clackamas County staff who have been coming, uh, to, uh, to the offices day in and day out to box food, uh, on Mondays for, uh, our senior citizen centers. I've had the privilege of delivering that, uh, out to the rural parts of our county, and believe me, it is food that is appreciated by the folks out there. Secondly, uh, recently, uh, four or more of our major unions put together a food drive, also pooled funds, and, um, have delivered upwards of 3,000 boxes of food to people who are, um, in need. Uh, I had the honor of helping pass out some of that food, uh, this last weekend, but I'd like to note that UFCW 555, Operating Engineers 701, the American Federation of Teachers, the Laborers Union Launa, and Teamsters, among others, pooled resources and have been, uh, delivering food to people, uh, during this, uh, COVID period of time. And then finally, um, Commissioner Savis and I had the honor of representing the Commission at the opening of a niece house, which is a home for women and girls who have been trafficked, to get them out of it. Um, and I'd like to thank a whole bunch of people, so please bear with me. Uh, Village for Women and the Home Builders Foundation, uh, are thanking the Agnew Family Foundation, Bank of the West, Banner Bank, Fidelity National Title, the Murdoch Foundation, Northwest Natural Gas, Oregon Building Officials Association, the Oregon Community Foundation, South, the, the South Lake Church, and the State of Oregon Department of Human Services. But also, and this is really what makes things happen, these are the businesses that contributed either money or material or time or whatever they could to make this project get off the ground. The building captain was Jim Standring of Westland Industries. The building captain was Jim Standring of Westland Industries. The companies part of Home Builders Foundation that helped donate were ABC Roofing, American Sanican, Aqua Resource Design and Consulting, Barton Construction, Bliss Roofing, Builders First Source, Builders Hardware and Supply, California Closets, CCNL Roofing, Clackamas Landscape Supply, Clean It Up Mark, CMT Surveying and Consulting, Fireside Home Solutions, GNA Pro Painting, Gary's Vacu Flow, Jerry Aberry, Glasgow, Globe Lighting, Great Northwest Gutters, Grummel Engineering, Home Certified, Inova Northwest, Interstate Roofing, James Hardy Building Products, JB Instant Lawn, Jim Hicks Excavating, JLJ Earth Movers, Keller Supply Company, Malarkey Roofing Products, Medallion Industries, Miller Paint, MLS Construction, Norwestco, Old Castle, Oregon City Garbage, Pacific Crest Custom Cabinetry, Pacific Lumber and Trust, Pape, Parker Concrete, Par Lumber, Paulson's Floor Coverings, Performance Insulation, Pyramid Heating and Cooling, RC Landscaping, Roofline Supply, Sadie Echary, Salem Printing and Blueprint, Simpson Strong Tie, Standard TV and Appliance, Tehran Architecture and Planning, Tecta America, The Garden Corner, Titan Exteriors, Westerberg Drilling, Western Pacific Building Materials, and Warehouser Trust and Joist. These are the companies right here in our county and in our region that have stepped up to help women and children and girls that have been trafficked, not just in this project, but also at the Safe Place Project for women and children that are getting away from abusive situations. So remember these businesses and companies and organizations when you are needing home improvements of any kind. And make sure we support our local businesses who are supporting those who need the help and partnering with Clackamas County and other organizations. Thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman.
Chair, can I just, just add one more that was, that, that was, needs to be mentioned? And I want to thank Administrator Schmidt and DTD and all those that helped with this project in the permitting aspect and waived some fees to make, make this happen. So thank you, Gary. Thank you, Dan, and anyone else involved in assisting these folks expedite this project.
All right. Thank you. Sonya.
Thank you. Today's really been an emotional day. I find myself tearing up throughout our talks and honoring of Mary Raski, our wonderful clerk, and of course, Mary Jo Cartesany, who's retiring. Change is tough and we've experienced a lot of that. So we have to carry on the beautiful spirits of those that touch our hearts. Paul and I participated in a community meeting for the children's levy last night before we had our listening session on, on racism. And I was pretty amazed at the, the community outreach and the overwhelming presence of folks there. And the talk of, there are so many people coming out to endorse this measure and wanting to be supported that they're having a hard time keeping up with, with all of the, the folks supporting it. So I really appreciate, Paul. Thank you for suggesting that our commission make a statement and a comment. And I'm happy to work with you on that so that when we come back from recess, we can, we can be united there. Because this is what's important. It's, it's working for our future. It's working for our kids. And this is something that, that we can do. There's a lot that we don't have control over, but this is the one thing that we can do. So with that, you know what? I think I'm going to miss all of you. And we're on recess for two weeks. Then I am going to try really, really hard not to work. It's so hard to not like look at, look at the emails and, and work because we love it. I know I speak for all of us and I say we really love serving our residents and our community. So, but I'm going to work really hard not to work. So when we come back in September, we are more revived and energetic. And we got to get Gary, okay, all of you, we've got to get Gary to tell us we can take a vacation. Because I think maybe like the next two weeks might be just a little bit of a vacation for him because we're not going to be calling him every five minutes. But we, Gary Schmidt, our administrator, and Nancy Bush, our emergency operations commander, these two people really need to take a, take a vacation. So we're getting ours for the next two weeks. Let's encourage our wonderful staff to take a break, but not in the next two weeks. We need you here for that. So thanks.
Well, thank you. You know, this weekend's Labor Day, or is it this weekend? No, it's the end of the month, right? Yeah. Is recognition of the American labor movement. Every year, we have gone to Oaks Park where thousands of people are. And often, we are flipping burgers and serving folks up. I'll miss that a lot. And then we have an opportunity to speak on stage to the audience, which is always fun. I'll miss that a lot. But great group of people, the folks that built this country. It's a day to celebrate labor. So I'm going to be short, but you know, I communicate with our partners in Multnomah, Washington County, three days a week. Deborah Cefore, Chair of Multnomah County, Catherine Ariantin, Chair of Washington County. And we try to figure out ways where we can get out of this situation. And the, the answer is not with us. It's with you out there, following the rules, wearing the masks. Sacrifice, sacrifice so that we can put this behind us and our country can move back to some sense of normality. I feel for all the kids who are headed off to their first year of college or their senior year in high school or all the other things that they can't do. I had some trips planned, Hawaii in October, maybe. And various European cruises in the Mediterranean, all canceled. So I, we need to get back to work, get back to normal businesses. I don't know how much longer folks can survive this. We also have a really critical presidential election, very critical. We can move this nation forward or backwards. That's going to be up to you. And I'm excited about, about the Democratic Party and the hope that the Democratic Party gives us, freedom from lies, misinformation, and an effort to stop people from voting. And I'm glad that, that the Congress is meeting today, I believe, or next week to make sure that the post office has the necessary funds to make this process work. By the way, Oregon, I don't know how long we've been doing vote by mail, years. And it's been very successful. I remember my first year, I think, maybe it was my second time running. We had an incident at our, at our elections office with somebody with a pencil marking ballots. And a friend of Martha's saw it. And that's the only time I've ever heard of a ballot issue at the office. Now, of course, they can't bring pencils in. But I, I hope that folks, when this election is over, accept the decision and move this country forward. I am going to. But I may just turn off my TV for a couple of years and the news. But thank you, Gary, for your outstanding work. Going to miss you next week. And I'll be around. I may be, I'm fishing for five days. I have never done that in my life. And my, my grandfather was a great fisherman. My dad never did really take it up. But I'm going to show Grandpa that I'm a better fisherman. And so thank you. And if I catch, well, when I catch them, I'll save you all a slice. Have a great weekend and thank you very much.